All right, let's get the show on the road.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, Ms. Shelley. Could you please lead us in prayer?
Bow our heads, please. Oh, worthy Father who art in heaven, and oh, your beautiful Son, Jesus, who died on the cross for the sins of the world. And then, oh, Holy Spirit, we acknowledge you all today for the indwelling in each and every one of us, and also that you are always present for each and every prayer, individually, corporately, and as a nation. So, Father God, we ask, since this is the day that you have made, and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. And as we rejoice, Lord God, we ask you to look upon our local government, our commissioners, our mayor, Lord God, our townships, Lord God, and the cities thereof, Lord God, that the decisions that they make is to serve your people. And as they serve, Lord God, protect them from all harm, danger, and heinuses, Lord God, and that the decisions will be for all people and not just some people. We ask this in the name of Jesus, and in Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Shelley.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Our next public workshop will be held here on Tuesday, May 20th at 10:30 a.m. And our next regular meeting will be held here on Wednesday, May 21st at 10:30 a.m. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated May 6, 2025, and the regular meeting dated May 7, 2025, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve them.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is to establish the creation of the House Bill 366 Fund to be known as Fund Number 915 for use by the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. This fund is being created pursuant to House Bill 366, which became effective April 9, 2025.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of May, 2025, as Mental Health Awareness Month in Trumbull County, Ohio. Good mental health is essential to every resident's overall health and well-being. The Board of Commissioners wishes to thank the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board's faithful work on improving the well-being of our community by establishing and maintaining an effective, efficient, and quality system of alcohol, drug, and mental health services for the citizens of Trumbull County, helping to make recovery a reality.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and we're going to present a resolution after we read it, April. Thank you for everything you and your whole group does there. I could read it. Okay, resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners proclaiming the month of May, Mental Health Awareness Month in Trumbull County, Ohio. Whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners proclaims the month of May, 2025, as Mental Health Awareness Month in Trumbull County, Ohio. And whereas, May is Mental Health Month, is a national campaign designed to raise awareness about mental health issues in the United States. And whereas, good mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, with early and effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, one in five Americans experience a mental health issue in their lifetime. And whereas, each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the responsibility to help people with mental health issues and to promote mental wellness. And therefore, be it resolved, the Trumbull County Commissioners join with the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board and proclaim May, 2025, as Mental Health Month in Trumbull County. And therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Trumbull County to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health, to protect their mental health, and to support accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And we'd like to take a picture, April, with you and your board members. It's very important that we pay attention to the mental health of our residents here. And we are doing all that we can, working with the hospitals, and also identifying these health issues in our public. So, thank you very much, April, and your whole crew here. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Okay, I'll continue. Item number eight is to approve fiscal year's 2026/2027 grant application for TCAP, Targeted Community Alternative to Prison, in the amount of $1,227,333, to be paid in eight equal installments as listed. The grant is effective for the term commencing July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2027. And in the note, at such time as Trumbull County does not receive funding, the Board of Commissioners has no obligation to fund this program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nine is to amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated April 9, 2025. Item number 20 that read, "To enter into a contract in the amount of $617,045 with LDV Custom Specialty Vehicles through the GSA Federal Procurement Program for the acquisition of the TCEMA Mobile Command Post Vehicle." It has been determined that it would be cost-effective to have the unit delivered to Trumbull County by LDV representatives. Amendment is necessary to include the additional cost of delivery and providing the in-house, in-service training in the amount of $2,136, changing the overall original approved cost to $619,181.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to authorize the Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the Township Highway 222 Houselcraft Road Reclamation Project. The project includes the full depth of reclamation of Houselcraft Road in Farmington Township between Stroop-Hitcocks Road and Hoffman-Norton Road.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to authorize the Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the Mesopotamia Township 2025 Road Program. Project includes the improvement to five township roads in Mesopotamia Township.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to approve the second extension to the 2025-2026 Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract with Mainlight Electric Company, Inc., for an additional 12-month period commencing July 7, 2025, and ending July 6, 2026. This traffic signal maintenance contract in the amount of $51,600 is being paid for from the highway fund as listed.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 13 is to approve the application for closure and use of a Trumbull County road and/or bridge and release from liability and indemnification agreement as submitted by Luca D. Oliviera of LDO Entertainment, Inc. The application and release are for the use of South Levitt Road between Kibler-Toot Road and Risher Road in Warren Township on June 1, 2025, from 8 a.m. to 3 p.m.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 14 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, J-Roe Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 15 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, Jeswald Auto Truck Services.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 16 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, Joseph Ray, Enbridge Gas, Ohio, and Village Energy Cooperative.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 17 is to execute a letter of support for the City of Gerard's application to the Appalachian Regional Commission funding for fiscal year 2026. The project will allow for combined sewer overflow station improvements. And to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute said letter.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 18 is to designate the week of May 11, 2025, through May 17, 2025, as Economic Development Week in Trumbull County in accordance with International Economic Development Council Economic Development Week.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 19 is to concur with the Trumbull County Planning Commission and the Trumbull County Engineers' Office in accordance with the Trumbull County Subdivision Regulation and accept irrevocable letter of credit dated September 12, 2022, in lieu of a maintenance bond issued by Home Federal Savings and Loan for a period of two years for constructing the water-quality pond and drainage infrastructure for Lot D5 only, located within the replat of Klein's Farm, Lot D, in Liberty Township.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 20. There's several parts to this, so I'm going to summarize this, Commissioners. Item 20, the Trumbull County Planning Commission is requesting that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners approve the following actions related to Project Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program. Number one, to authorize the Planning Commission to prepare and submit the Project Year 2025 CDBG Community Development Allocation Application in the amount of $632,000 for the projects as listed. And then, I'm going to skip down to two, to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to prepare and submit the Project Year 2025 CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Application on behalf of the City of Gerard, area-wide low and moderate income benefit area census in the amount of $750,000. For the following activities as listed, next page. Item three, to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to prepare and submit the Project Year 2025 CDBG Critical Infrastructure Grant Application for the Frederick Street Storm Drainage Infrastructure Improvements Project, located in Liberty Township, area-wide low and moderate income benefit area, in the amount of $266,270 for the following activities as listed. Number four, to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation on Thursday, May 15, 2025, announcing the Project Year 2025 CDBG Second Public Hearing. The purpose of the Second Public Hearing is to gather public comments regarding the proposed projects listed above, and is scheduled for 6 p.m. on Thursday, May 22. Should be 2025, I'm thinking, at Liberty Township Administration Building, located at 1315 Churchill Hubbard Road in Youngstown. And number five, to authorize the President of the Board of Commissioners, Rick Hernandez, to sign and execute any and all related documents, including but not limited to the pre-applications, applications, administration, receipt, execution, and implementation of funds through the Project Year 2025 CDBG Community Development Allocation, Neighborhood Revitalization, and Critical Infrastructure Grant Programs.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
I have a question on the motion before I vote. On item one, it has the amount of $632, and then down for the total, it says $642. So, should the item up at the top be $642 also? In item one?
Julie, do you want to... Julie Green.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission. The difference is the $10,000 that was being authorized from the revolving loan fund. So, the allocation is $632, and we're also adding leverage in the amount of $10,000 from the revolving loan fund.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 21 is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and execute all documents related to the application, execution, and implementation of the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant Application for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Number 7-S-22, Weathersfield Township, Trumbull County, Ohio, and to authorize the Trumbull County sanitary engineers to prepare and submit the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant Application to the East Gate Regional Council of Governments for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 22 is to remove from table Commissioners' regular meeting agenda dated May 7, 2025. Item number 29 that read, "To approve the best submitted proposal from Warren Door for the replacement of inmate entrance/exit door at the Trumbull County Courthouse in the amount of $10,325."
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 23 is to approve the lowest and best proposal as submitted by GDK Doors for the replacement of inmate entrance/exit door to the Trumbull County Courthouse in the amount of $7,785.75.
Point of order, if I could. Do we need to vote on 22 first, since we removed it from the table as it's written? Before we vote on number 23, which is separate company, separate price. I believe we need, if we remove it from the table, we need to act on that one first.
Mr. Danso.
Before we have the second one.
Could you help us with this, sir?
Yeah, Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, I would just recommend that, you know, since you did remove it from the table, but you have never actually passed a resolution authorizing the award, I don't, I don't think it would be necessary to vote no on a particular award and then vote yes on another one. I think that removing it from the table would allow you to just go ahead and, essentially, I guess, I think legally speaking, that's all sort of one agenda item, once you remove it from the table, and it would, it's not really an amendment, but it's changing what the, what the language is on there to award to just a different company. So, I think, I don't think you need to vote no, is all I'm saying, I guess, technically.
Even though it's written, the name of the company and the amount is written in the item that were removed from table?
Sure, I think, you could do it that way if you want. Don't get me wrong, that's fine. But I think you could also just, just go ahead. Again, I think it is at number 22 and 23. Yeah. I think that essentially, that really, number 22 is just essentially removing from the table. 23 is the award, so you can just award to whoever you want under that next agenda item. And then, the minutes will reflect who the award was made to, if that makes sense. But if you feel more comfortable with voting no on the first one, that's totally fine, too. There's no harm in that.
Well, by, with the opinion of the prosecutor, I think we could go by that, Commissioner.
I'm fine with that, if he's okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I need a motion for item 23 then.
Can you read it again, please?
Yes, "To approve the lowest and best proposal as submitted by GDK Doors for the replacement of inmate entrance/exit door to the Trumbull County Courthouse in the amount of $7,785.75."
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, and with discussion, I'd like to thank our maintenance department. Last week, Commissioner Malloy, you and Commissioner Bernard and myself brought up the issue of the cost that's just saved the county $3,000 due to the fact that our maintenance department had made some calls to rectify a situation here. So, I want to thank them for their efforts. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, item 24 is to authorize the repair of the Trumbull County Jail Chiller Control Board by Gardner in the amount of $18,892.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item 25 is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the week of May 11 through May 17, 2025, as Police Week, and May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Trumbull County, Ohio. In conjunction with the proclamation issued by the Honorable Mike DeWine, Governor of the State of Ohio, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners commends all law enforcement officers who stand ready to defend and protect our residents. The Board of Commissioners encourages all citizens to recognize the gratitude that is due police officers who sacrificially serve to protect. We owe every law enforcement officer and their families a debt of gratitude which can never be fully repaid.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
We have a resolution to read. I don't see the sheriff here. We can present it to him at a later time. Read this one. Okay, what we have is a resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners proclaiming May 11, 2025, through May 17, 2025, National Police Week. Whereas, National Police Week is a time of solemn reflection and public recognition honoring the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the United States. And whereas, the deputies of Trumbull County Sheriff's Office exemplifies courage, integrity, and steadfast commitment to public safety, often placing their own lives at risk to protect the residents and communities they serve. And whereas, the daily duties of law enforcement demand long hours, personal sacrifice, and unwavering dedication qualities consistently demonstrated by the deputies of Trumbull County Sheriff's Office and performance of their responsibilities. And whereas, we paused during this week to recognize not only those currently serving, but also those who have served in years past, and most solemnly, those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, ensuring their bravery and service are never forgotten. And whereas, the professionalism, compassion, and strength of the deputies of Trumbull County Sheriff's Office foster a deep and enduring trust between law enforcement and the communities of Trumbull County, upholding the principles of justice, order, and peace. And whereas, we remain forever grateful for the contributions, sacrifices, and enduring legacy of our fallen heroes whose memory continues to inspire and guide those who serve today. And now, therefore, be it further resolved, that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, with heartfelt appreciation, honor and commend the deputies of Trumbull County Sheriff's Office during National Police Week for their dedication, bravery, and outstanding service. May their commitment to protecting and serving Trumbull County always be recognized, supported, and celebrated. Adopted this week of National Police Officer Memorial Week with deep gratitude and enduring respect, signed by the three of us Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, let's give our sheriff's department a round of applause, please.
Continue. Item 26 is to adopt a resolution congratulating DJ Godfrey as the winner of the Giaga-Trumbull Solid Waste Management District Earth Day T-shirt Design Contest. One winner was chosen from Giaga and Trumbull Counties in the state of Ohio, and to recognize April 22, 2025, as Earth Day in Trumbull County, celebrating its 55th anniversary in support of environmental protection. Earth Day was first held on April 22, 1970. Each year, the Giaga-Trumbull Solid Waste District supports the efforts of over 2,000 volunteers to remove litter from beautiful Trumbull and Giaga Counties. DJ Godfrey's design entry was used to adorn the t-shirts distributed to over 1,200 litter cleanup volunteers in 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
We have a resolution. Okay. Resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners congratulating DJ Godfrey, winner of the Giaga-Trumbull Solid Waste Management District Earth Day T-shirt Contest. Whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins the Giaga-Trumbull Solid Waste District in congratulating DJ Godfrey for designing an artistic and innovative t-shirt that was worn by over 2,000 volunteers, helping to diminish littered areas in beautiful Giaga and Trumbull Counties. And whereas, Giaga-Trumbull Solid Waste Management District held an Earth Day T-shirt contest for the volunteer cleanup, where one winner was chosen between both counties. And whereas, DJ, a junior this year, was involved in a variety of activities, including the executive committee. She was a sophomore and junior class president, a member of the National Honor Society, symphonic band, marching band, jazz band, golf, drama club, Gay Straight Alliance Club, French Club, and outside of high school, played percussion in the Stanbaugh Youth Concert Band. Very distinguished. And whereas, after high school, DJ plans to join the Air Force ROTC program and is interested in aeronautical and environmental engineering. Whereas, Earth Day, celebrated April 22, 2025, marked its 55th anniversary with 192 countries and over 1 billion people participating around the globe, demonstrating the longstanding conveying power of Earth Day, bringing people from all walks of life to work together for a better future. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners proudly joins others in recognizing DJ Godfrey's outstanding past, present, and future accomplishments. Congratulations and best wishes by the Board of Trumbull County Health Commissioners. Can we give DJ a hand? And we'd like to take a picture, DJ.
Do you have, you have a shirt? You have one of the shirts?
Do you have one of the shirts? Say that's a talented young lady there. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Item 27 is to reappoint Mr. Lance Grant as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for an additional four-year term commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2029.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 28 is to reappoint Mrs. Louise Klein as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for an additional four-year term commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2029.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, our next item is an executive session, but before we do that, on item number 18, we designated May 11th to 17th Economic Development Week. We don't have a resolution for that, but we have some of our economic development leaders in the room here today. I'd like to recognize and have them say a few words if they would, because none of this would be possible. We just sealed the deal on the Kimberly-Clark deal. There's many other things that are happening day in and day out in Trumbull County behind the scenes that we don't see. But there's a couple of people I'd like to recognize if I could. First, Nick Coggins with the Planning Commission, who is our designated Economic Development Director for the county. And I also see Mr. Anthony Trevino, which is the Executive Director of the Port Authority. And for all the people out there, we have a multi-billion dollar investment coming here with Kimberly-Clark Corporation. If you drive by there, you can see, you can see the work being done as we speak. And none of that would be possible if it wasn't for these two individuals reaching out to Kimberly-Clark and paving the way for this to happen. So we're going to see dollars rain down on our county over the next generation in lieu of Kimberly-Clark. And it's, we have to recognize Mr. Trevino and Mr. Coggins for being the catalyst to make that happen for our community. And Nick, if you can also, if you can also identify the rest of the team you have with you here today.
Yes, Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. I want to introduce also Teresa Miller, who's the Executive Director of the Valley Economic Development Partners. They do all of our local financing. They have the Small Business Administration 504, the Regional 166. They did Trumbull County's revolving loan fund with the ARPA. And they also did the Trumbull County Grant Program with the ARPA and the COVID-19 funds. They are our local financier, they help all of our small businesses. They are a huge part of our team when it comes to helping people locally. We also have Jason Neal with Lake to River. Lake to River is our local economic development organization as designated by Jobs Ohio, our state economic development organization. We also contract with them for all of our business retention, expansion, and attraction. They go meet with all of our existing companies one-on-one. They meet with site selectors when, like Kimberly-Clark, when they hire an outside company because they don't want anybody to know who they are, and they're looking for just this many acres. And this is Jobs, or I'm sorry, Lake to River, the Jobs Ohio branch is normally the first person, and Jason is our site guy. So these are very important key members of our economic development team. We also have several others that could not make it today. But we did want to recognize it's Economic Development Week. And again, that was through the International Economic Development Council. So that's not just Ohio, that's not just the United States, that's Ireland, France, Italy, all across the country. It's truly, this is the week of economic development. So recognizing all their hard work and the leadership that it takes from them to not only retain the companies that we have through some of the rough times that we've had, but find new companies and find the sites and get everybody here, so.
Thank you, I think they all deserve a round of applause, please. Mr. Trevino, do you, anybody have anything else that they would like to add? Mr. Trevino, or are you taking a picture first?
No, I really want to add, and we're grateful, is the Port Authority, of course, you control half of the board of the Port Authority and Mahoning County appoints the other half. You appoint really great board members, Mr. Cavalli, Mr. Williams, they just really are great people. But thank you for your support. Projects like Kimberly-Clark, you know, we can do all we want with Jobs Ohio, our direct link and everything, but without the support of the Commissioners, it doesn't get across the finish line. So we're grateful for that, you know, your relationship with us, being able to help them, whether it's to close a road, change a road, whether it's to do a CRA or a JED, you know, without government being supportive and listening to, you know, what we need to do to get the job done, we wouldn't be here today. So we're excited for what's going to happen with Kimberly-Clark today, tomorrow, and the future. And I bet you that some other agencies probably have other things up their sleeve for Trumbull County that they're not willing to talk about yet, but we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Yeah, I, on behalf of the Commissioners, just want to thank you all for the job you do. You, you make it, definitely make it easier for the Commissioners when we have to approve these things, you know. And it's a good time to be a Commissioner in Trumbull County, for sure.
And I only have a short comment. I've only been here five months, but Mr. Trevino, you make it very easy for us to work with you. And I really appreciate your, your hard work and your upbeat. I mean, you're always smiling, you always have an upbeat, and you're always promoting Trumbull County. So thank you very much.
Jason Neal, Director of Site Strategies, Lake to River. I want to echo your sentiments about Anthony Trevino and the Western Reserve Port Authority. Without them, we don't get that deal done with Kimberly-Clark. And I think everybody in the room knows that. And, and when you have a, have a project that big, that large, that transformative, there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen on that one. And I think it says a lot about this community that they're willing to come here and make such a great investment. That speaks, you know, about the workforce, obviously infrastructure's there, so it makes it easy and turnkey for them. And the easier we can make projects for these companies to come in, the more we're going to have. And we have a very robust pipeline, we're very excited about it. I wish we could talk about it, but a lot of times these larger projects are slow burns. And we have to give them time to be able to do their due diligence, not only on sites, but on the communities as well, because they're making a huge investment in you all as well. But thank you guys so much for having us. We are absolutely honored and delighted to be a part of this community.
Thank you, yes. And Lake to River, without Lake to River, Anthony, I think you know, and all the other proponents that are involved in it, it would be very hard to do what you do.
I'll take two seconds since everyone else talked. Again, we appreciate your faith in us and, and helping us achieve our mission. The great Kimberly-Clark deals are wonderful, but we're also here helping those coffee shops open in the center of town and the really good delicious bakery you have. So without, you know, your support, we wouldn't be able to get those deals like that done as well. We love helping the smaller guys as well. Also want to give a shout out to the Chamber and Eastgate, who have also been very instrumental. And the way that we have been collaborating together as economic development organizations is unheard of. I've been doing this for 20 years and it's unprecedented what we're doing right now. So it's great, we're really showing that you can do bigger and better things when you work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do with all these, your guidance on all these companies, whether they're small or large, they all count.
Mr. President, I'd like to see if we can get a photo for them for our Facebook page for Economic Development Week. And also I see the sheriff walked in, we can do a photo after that, and then we'll have our executive session.
Julie, you really should. You should though.
Start a round of applause for this group. Sheriff Wilson? We did a resolution for you and your department and.
Yes. Oh, sure, yeah. Yep.
Sheriff Wilson, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. This week is National Police Week, and I just want to recognize the hard work that our officers do, along with the rest of our staff and every other officer that serves this great nation. People go out every day to put their life on the line, you know, knowing the risks that's involved, and they come to work every day to do their mission and to keep us safe. And I just want to thank all of our officers for that, especially our deputies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session pursuant to O R C 12122G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second emotion?
And for discussion, meeting with Mr. Wilson first, since he's here on the clock, if we could do that?
Sure.
We have two quick executive sessions, and then we will be following kind of with a press conference. So the media may want to hang around for that.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay. Pursuant to Ohio Vice Code one two one two two G three conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body. They're subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second emotion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion to enter an executive session pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code one two one two two G three. disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ready, Chrissy? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 12122G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body as subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
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 And finally, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion from the floor. And this is a motion to authorize Bricker Grayden, Attorney Brody Conover, to execute, agreed upon entry and authorize a $51,000 payment to law firm of Baron Peck, Benny and Schlemmer COLPA. This agreement will be paid from Fund 00112010001000-1506810. And in the notes of this motion, $49,500 is for attorney fees for David Beechers and Matthew Miller Novak, and $1,500 will be split between Michelle Nicole Frenchco and Open Government Advocacy.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
And I guess at this time, do we want to go to public comment, or do you want me to read our statement?
Why don't you read the statement?
Let's read the statement. Yeah, I would agree with that. We have a statement from the Board of Commissioners in regards to that last agenda item. The Trumbull County Commissioners, Commissioner Rick Hernandez, Commissioner Tony Bernard, and myself, Denny Malloy, settled a lawsuit with Michelle Frenchco and Open Government Advocates that was pending in the Trumbull County Common Police Court before Judge Wyatt McKay. The lawsuit alleged that prior Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Records Commission, and Trumbull County's Budget Commission committed technical violations of the Open Meetings Act, and that former Commissioner Mauro Cano-Lamesa, former Sheriff Paul Monroe, and two sheriff deputies improperly destroyed text messages on their personal phones. The lawsuit settled all claims that were brought against all of Trumbull County's elected officials and two of its statutory commissions. Rather than continue to unnecessarily expend Trumbull County taxpayer dollars in litigation brought by a former commissioner, Michelle Frenchco, the Trumbull County Commissioners settled the lawsuits so the county can finally move on from the fiasco and continue to serve and advocate for the people of Trumbull County. It's sad that a county's elected officials and taxpayers had to spend nearly two years fighting alleged sunshine violations brought by the former commissioner against the very board that she served on. All this so she and her accomplice can personally pocket $1,500 of taxpayer funds while getting her attorneys paid almost $50,000. But now it's over, and the new Board of Commissioners can continue to work to move Trumbull County forward in a positive direction and not look back.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sure Commissioner Bernard, you have a comment to make. I'll make a comment after that.
My comment is that upon taking office in January, we were presented with this court situation case, and after meeting with the judge, he advised us that it was the best interest for this board to settle this case as quickly as we could. So the attorney fees, the clock on the attorney fees would stop. He indicated that while it was at $50,000, it could go to $70,000, $80,000, $90,000. And it was certainly brought out that we were going to lose a couple of the cases. And so when you lose a couple of the cases, you're going to pay the entire attorney fees. So I'd just like to point out this happened before this board, before we took office in this board, and it even happened before Commissioner Malloy was here. So it happened in 2021. So in the best interest of trying to save the taxpayers' dollars, we settled the case.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. I mirror what the commissioners just said. We were basically backs against the wall in this situation. And in order to cut any further damage done to Trumbull County residents, taxpayers, we did make a decision to settle this claim. This, of course, was before this board was assembled, and it just shows that moving forward, that this board wants to move on, and we want to work together for the common good and the betterment of Trumbull County, and cut all ties with any further litigation that any former commissioner, or for that matter, anybody that, you know, was here at that point in time, had anything to do with. So I think this is a new day, and we can move forward and get this off the commissioners' the board's backs, and we look forward to moving forward for a better common good of Trumbull County. Commissioner, I don't know if you have anything further to say?
Yeah, just to keep it simple, when I came on the board for two years, I'd listened to the meetings beforehand, and I had seen the arrests that happened before me. I'd seen the way the meetings were before me with the prior commissioners and all the fighting and infighting. And when I got here, I think there were four lawsuits against that commissioner from staff at the time for the way they were treated by that commissioner. And I saw it firsthand. I testified firsthand with that. She kind of retaliated in a sense and had 36 different things she alleged against the prior board and even her current board at that time. The judge narrowed it down to, I believe, 17, then seven, of which I was named in one of those, and that was when I sent people home when she was being dangerous and unruly when we had the Sheriff's Department up here, and I sent the employees home early. And she alleged that was a wrong act. The judge did settle that one out. That is not part of this. That was thrown out. What did stick was an allegation of the Budget Commission, of which was the prosecutor, the treasurer, and the auditor pre Martha Yoder. I want to make that clear, that that occurred before Auditor Yoder was here, so she is not named in any of this either. And most of these allegations were between the years 20 and 21, I'm sorry, 21 and 22, after she came into term in her first office. And Brian Ames, who is the open government advocate that is named as her co-conspirator partner in this, we learned that he had 52 different communities that he filed lawsuits against in the past year. Some of them may even be in this room, some of them, other communities in our township. The guy makes a living looking for mistakes that boards make. And he was here with a camera, watching every move we made. And as new boards were here, if you made the slightest mistake as far as missing a note, missing a rule of order or something, he pounced on it for his own profit in his pocket. Ms. Frenchco jumped on that train in hopes of getting big money off the county. Instead of preventing it from happening, instead of working as a board member to prevent it from happening and correcting many mistakes that were made, she lied in wait for the gotcha moment where she can say, aha, another one, cha-ching. And this, over two years of rain of tear, ended in her getting 750 bucks, which, good riddance, spend the 750 any way you want. It's a new era. It's a new time, and we never have to go back to that era again. Thank God. I lived through it. Many people in this room lived through it. Many employees lived through it. And although this is highway robbery for an attorney to get $50,000 over simple records violation things, they worked the system the right way, they make a living. The one attorney that was her attorney in Cincinnati, he does this for a living also or did this for a living, he since moved on to the public sector now, so he'll get a taste of what it feels like being on the other side. But they made a living of preying on vulnerable townships, cities. I can tell you that everything that was alleged in this thing, you know, has not happened one time since. We have some of the best record keeping. We've got a $60,000 video system for all of our meetings now. If there's any good that came out of this is Trumbull County, dots every i and crosses every t, and I think we did it as well as every other county before. But mistakes happen occasionally, and we didn't want to risk going to trial, although I would have loved it. I would have absolutely loved to put her on the stand. We didn't want to risk any more public dollars at risk of that, because you go to a trial, her attorneys had that clock ticking like a New York City taxicab meter, and that thing was rolling every day. And we didn't want to see the county end up over one simple potential loss in court that we would have had to pay the whole attorney fees, which would have been over 100 grand. And if they would have lost, it probably would have went even further than that. We just had to stop the bleeding. You know, somewhere, we had to cut ourselves loose to that nightmare of the last couple of years and move forward, and I think we've done that now with this new board. And we're not going to have any shenanigans like that. We work well with everybody. We do things clear and professionally. We're going to continue to do so for the people in Trumbull County. And I'll go, again, this is going to be a knot in my stomach, a pit in my stomach that we had to pay a single penny for this BS. But for this BS, but we, we have to do it. Our backs, like Mr. Hernandez says, are against the wall. And we got played, we got used. And I urge our state representatives to prevent this from happening again. They need to come up with some legislation to protect cities, municipalities and townships from being targeted and robbed basically on gotcha moments that, that there needs to be further things to prevent attorneys from being able to run bills up like this on a government just because we're the government and they feel like we have deep pockets. These are real people's money that we're playing with here that are now in the hands of attorneys because somebody alleged someone made a mistake at a meeting. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Again, I'd just like to say, you know, this board, you know, our decision was, you know, do we stop the clock? Or do we continue wasting taxpayers' money? And you know what? We said enough is enough. And my only comment was, would be that I just wish the other board would have settled it before it got to 50,000. But that didn't happen.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Well, one thing, one, one last final note, I guess with this is facts are the facts. There's going to be a lot of spin on this. There's going to be a lot of politics played with this decision. There's going to be a lot of finger pointing from people that don't like government and want to come after certain individuals on prior boards and even current boards. We may have allegations their fingers pointed at us. The facts are in the court ruling. When you read the court ruling, the judge spells it out and you'll see the facts are the facts. Don't believe the spin. Don't get involved in the hype that goes with it. Read the facts as they are. The settlement was worked out between the attorneys and we're moving forward from here on in.
And also it was the year 21 and 22. Those were the years, 2021 and 2022.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
We do need to move. At this time, we would like to move into the public comment. If you'd like to come up to the podium, Mayor, looks like you, you're ready to go. You must be. We have two mayors here, one former and one present.
I saw you smiling back there, Mayor. It seems like you may know Mr. Ames and open record, open government advocates. Unfortunately.
Ben Kyle, Mayor of the City of Hubbard, I am here speaking as the chairman of the EMA Advisory Board to thank the commissioners and the hard work of EMA Director John Hickey, really putting us in a position where we can take our command post and be able to utilize it countywide, all four corners of the county to provide the emergency services that our residents deserve and be able to have this one piece of equipment that will truly link 911, police, fire, EMS and all of the additional services that we are continuing to grow through the EMA and the sheriff's office with our drone teams, our search and rescue. Everything will be able to be housed in a single vehicle that we will be able to take anywhere at any given moment. We never had that before. Some counties can only dream of it and we truly will have wheels on the ground and be able to make a difference when it comes to those emergencies situations. So as the chairman and other members of the board, I thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to amplify what you had said, it's an honor to be able to provide that through ARPA. And, you know, even, you know, to the former board that, you know, that did this. But to be a part of that, to see it come to fruition, you're exactly right. To have that type of a command vehicle in any case of any riots or any kind of, anything that might hit our valley or, or our, our communities here, that command vehicle will be present and can be present. So thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, Mayor.
Commissioner, this kind of came out of the train derailment that they had in East Liverpool. And Mr. Hickey came back and was kind of telling us about some of the things he saw and realized that our AMA vehicle was a trailer that smelled like baked beans and sweat and was mouse ridden. And it was someone's hand me down from years and years ago that had its better days at Mosquito Lake Campgrounds in the seventies and, and we couldn't stand for that, you know, we, we deserved better. We got a great AMA director. We got a fantastic AMA board and they deserve equipment equal with their professionalism that they have there. So it was a no brainer for us to do this and I hope that vehicle never leaves the garage. But unfortunately, there may be instances and if it does, we'll be ready.
Absolutely. And it's, it's something that we are very passionate about and we look forward to being able to bring it out on the road to show the taxpayers and show the residents and all of our police and fire and the EMS services and be able to bring that to our communities so people can understand what level of training we have at our, all of our emergency services, but also be able to see it, fully interact with it and understand that we'll be there for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's an honor to have two Hubbard City mayors sitting in the House today. I'm a little partial to Hubbard, as you can. All right, we need a motion?
Well, before we do the motion, Commissioner.
Oh, here goes the duck report.
Nope. In the spirit of the last motion predators, we have a lot of predators that live in the county, coyotes being one. Right now the coyotes are raising their pups. We have them in every part of the county. We have them in the city. We have them living right here in downtown Warren in the sewer systems. A coyote will have anywhere from eight to 12 pups. The female, she stays in the den and feeds them through gestation period. The male does all the hunting and a coyote needs to, needs to go out and catch more than 40 pounds of meat a week to feed the pups. That's a lot of squirrels, a lot of turkeys. There is no place in the county that does not have them. As a matter of fact, Central Park, New York City has over 300 coyotes that live right in Central Park that they could document through radio callers and video camera observation. We've got them right here. We got them in our parks. We got them along the river. Again, they are a skittish animal. You know, last week I talked about bears and lo and behold, a bear showed up and buzzetta on the news that night. So you're probably going to see coyotes tomorrow, but they are denning up right now. They will take a small dog. They will take a cat. Barn cats are some of their favorite food. And if you have a pet this time of year and you live in an area on the outskirts of suburbs where there's a known den, you just got to be careful because they get awful brave when it comes to feeding their pups and especially as the pups grow and eat more and more and more. And they've already harvested a lot of the dumb squirrels and they got to go after game food to still try to feed their family. That's when dogs and cats look a little better. So you want to just be cautious of it. There are a lot of foxes at the same time. They, they're less dangerous. But there are coyotes through the whole county and they're hunting right now to feed their, their young.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you document that, Raymond? Okay, you have that documented. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Will we adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.